All right. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody this morning. This is our regularly scheduled City Council Works Session for Monday, July 14th. And we're going to kick this off with our introduction of new city employees and our HR Director, Terry Wilcox.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Counsel, it is my pleasure to begin introductions on our wonderful new employees that are now working for the City Montros. Dominique could not make it today, so we're going to start with Public Works.
Good morning. I have one employee introduced today, Filberto Lemus. If I said that correctly, we all call him Philly. It's hard to say. He's in our Parks Division. Comes to us with some irrigation experience, which I'm sure we have put to use probably today. So anyway, I'll let him say a little bit about himself, and welcome to the team.
All right. So my name is Filberto Lemus.
Hold it real close.
I've been with Parks for two months. Started the season on the hired, like, third week time. I've been here eighteen years in Montros. I'm a father of two little kids. I know I look young, but, yeah, other than that, that's it.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're starting to keep some of our positions filled and have actually two new people in utilities today. First, I'm going to start with Shadrake Salazar. And Shadrake comes to us from Natarita and stuff, so has some experience in working public works and utilities over there. Let's tell a little bit more about himself.
Yeah, so I'm Shad Salazar. I've been working over there in the West End with Public Works for the last ten years or so. We just moved here at the beginning of the year. My wife has offered a job at the urgent care with Cedar Point. We really like it over here so far, so thank you for having me.
Welcome.
And our other one is Benjamin Freutenthal. Freutenthal, close. And I'll let him tell a little bit about himself.
I'm Benjamin. This is my first time, well, I guess, work for Delka County, but this is my first time in a city government. For this, I was mechanic, been born and raised here, love Montros. My dad's a local taxidermist, and yeah, that's about it.
Great, welcome.
And there is, I apologize for a typo on the spelling of his name, it is F-R-E-U-D. Next is Pete.
I have the pleasure of introducing Letitia Orne. She came to us from the Navy, and she's one of our brand-new police officers. We'll be actually swearing her in tomorrow night in front of you all at 5:30 PM with a other police officer and commander badge pending. So do you want to stand up and say a little bit about yourself?
Hi, I'm Letitia. I was in the Navy for six years. I lived in Japan for three years, so I have a little bit of experience in different communities over there. I'm originally from California. I met my partner in the Navy, in Japan, and then moved here. You've probably seen me around walking my corgis or paddle boarding with them, so nice to meet you all.
Paddle boarding with your corgis?
Yes.
That's awesome.
I am very happy to introduce Cory Brandt. This is her first day of the second week she has been our court administrator, and we are just thrilled to have her onboard. I will let her introduce herself.
My name is Cory Brandt. I worked at the county for fifteen years prior. We've been here for about eighteen years. I moved from California to here, so I'm sorry. But I'm on Grand Haller Inn now, so it's fine, right? I don't have to tell you that. So I did that for fifteen years, and then I was officially free. We did foster care, and now I'm working with you guys, and I just want to tell you thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
All right. Any questions? All right, welcome.
We're glad to have you all onboard, and we'll apologize if we don't remember your names at first, but we'll get it eventually. All right, moving on to our discussion items, we're going to go to our 2025 Private Activity Bond Allocation, and this is Community Development Specialist, Chris Ottinger.
Morning, Counsel. Thank you for having me today. Yes, we're bringing up, or coming up on the private activity bond allocation deadline, that'll be in September. I just want to bring this to you again, for the sake of the public, I'll just briefly say what a private activity bond is. It is an allocation from the state via the federal government to issue bonds for housing, usually affordable housing. The city has not issued bonds and doesn't usually like to do that. It's a very administrative and legal burden for jurisdiction of our size. So, but what this is, is an allocation, not a direct payment or cash available to us. It's something we have to ask for and then issue bonds, and it is, then that goes to fund these projects. What we have done in the past is use it for, or assign it to the Colorado Housing Finance Authority. They collect a lot of these and issue them for a variety of housing programs, including first-time home buyers, as well as for affordable housing projects throughout the state. What we've done in the past is assign this to CHAFRA with some stipulations, asking that they use that for programs specific to Montros. And they have done, and have done a lot of good work here. Some of the most recent numbers for this last year in 2024, after we had allocated last year, they've actually issued, let's see, nineteen loans and valued at $6.3 million in Montros, just the city. And each loan is valued at about $330,000, which helped fifty-two people get into a home. So very valuable assets that CHAFRA has provided for us and through our allocation. And with that, I'll open up for questions.
Any questions? This is kind of our normal routine with the CHAFRA and the allocation, so it's always good to see that they're still putting that money back in Montros, and it's benefiting the City of Montros as well. And like you said, it takes a great burden off us not having to allocate and do the administration of those bonds, so thank you.
Yep. And one thing I'll add to is this part of the reason we do this is also nobody's asked for it specifically for affordable housing projects. Nothing is currently on the docket for that as well, so just giving you a letting know.
All right, moving on to the next item is our Vail Grant Authorization, and this is Chief Hall.
Thanks, Counsel. I'll try to make best use of the limited time we have here today. This is the Vail Grant application that we come to you with every year. It helps to support our statutorily required victim services. We have two victim services employees. One is Chantel Bainbridge, which you well know, and she's worked with us for twenty years. She's our victim services coordinator. And then Cynthia Barbosa, she's our victims advocate, and she, she staffs our weekend victim services. So we'd be looking to apply for a grant to pay for half of both of those salaries to the tune of $30,150 for the victim services coordinator and the $25,000 for the victims advocate. You should know, however, as I seem to sound like a broken record, that this is a state grant, and in years past, we've actually not seen an increase in the grant lately. We've seen decreases. So I do suspect that we will continue to see decreases, so what we put in for and what we are actually approved for could be very different. So, but coming to you today for authorization to apply for that grant.
I think this is one of those grants, again, that we really rely on very heavily, but wouldn't mind keeping us updated as to what we actually receive versus what we request.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, next is the 6600 Road Waterline Extension Project Contract Award, which is City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me hit my magic button here.
Your computer just likes it better when you're over here.
Yeah. Or as long as I don't work for the planning department. Really? So if this area sounds familiar, it is. This one we've been talking about for quite a while. There's two things that have predated this project that are going on, I'll just touch on quickly. This is the area of 6600 Road, which is also known as North Hillcrest, north of the highway here. This quadrant of town, you can kind of see if I zoom out a little bit. There's, the blue lines are our water infrastructure. You have a lot of urban centers up here, and then you start up into Bear Creek and some of this other high-density zone development that is all within Tri-County's district. And it's, some of it's even zoned R4. It's pretty ripe for urban development. And so we entered into a district changeover agreement with the, our water service area changeover agreement with Tri-County that will allow this area to be serviced by city water and allows for an interconnect to make sure that these areas can keep, the areas that do stay on Tri-County water can stay, keep, meet all modern fire requirements, so there's an interconnect that can open up in an emergency to keep fire flow for urban areas that are developing north of this area. So with that service area change, we are now looking to construct the waterline portions that go with interconnecting and kind of looping this portions of our water system. It's a good thing for us because you can see this is all kind of single straw feed up in this northern area, something we generally don't like on water systems. You like multiple feeds, so that if, in the event of an issue or a break, you're not taking out entire quadrants of town. So this project looks to, because of the district change, it facilitates us to interconnect our systems, make it more kind of congruent with the urban cores, leave the rural cores more rural, and support continued housing development. So along those lines, the city, in partnership with a couple developers eyeing some high-density development in these areas on North Hillcrest, applied for the Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grants through DOLA under their More Housing Now initiatives, and were awarded $2 million of that last fall. So that's the second part that's occurred over here recently. And part of that project was to help bolster and construct the waterline infrastructure needed for this area to support that housing and continued housing even outside of this area. So $600,000 of that goes towards this project here that we'll be talking about. So that's the regional look at what's going on in the area. The project itself that we're considering the contract award on is we're calling it the 6600 Road Waterline Interconnect Project, and it will run, actually, I'll maybe stay on the screen for a second. It'll, where our waterlines stop right here, and they're kind of smaller at the north end, it'll run some new waterlines, get properly sized, tied into our system, run north, actually connect onto existing Tri-County lines through this reach to be converted over to city lines, and then it runs north and connects to Draft Horse Road, which you can see actually runs down and actually is physically connected to our system right here. So it's kind of a logical thing, you know, they thought in the future that this may happen, and here we are. So it's actually a pretty clean changeover. And what we do at the north end of that system is construct an interconnect right here, and that's the one that, in an emergency, if there's a large fire demand north of here, we have an agreement between the city systems and Tri-County systems that allows our system to open. It's at a little higher pressure and higher hydraulic capacity to feed the areas to the north so that urban growth typically, Bear Creek is the largest urban density going on in the area, can continue to build out and keep that housing supported and safe as growth continues in these areas. So that work, yeah, that involves mostly just new waterline installations, crossing over some surfaces, and actually, Tri-County through this area actually has a redundant line as well that will be going or get crossed over, so it's all consolidated into a single line. So pretty basic waterline work, and then the interconnect itself is SCADA-controlled and ties into our system and has metering and all of that stuff to make sure all the controls and billing work between us and Tri-County. The unique thing about this district changeover is there's never a really clean way to change over districts. At some point, you're going to have stragglers either on the city side or on Tri-County's side. The way we're handling that, the majority of the customers are in, within this area, are within city limits, and as a result, they will become city customers. They used to be Tri-County customers. They were in city limits but on Tri-County water. Now that our lines are servicing the area, they will become city water customers. There are, and as development occurs, they will obviously all become city water customers because they'll need the city water fire protection. There are a couple customers, I think it's six, five or six out here, that are in, in the, still in the county, and we're serviced by Tri-County. They will continue to be serviced by Tri-County until a point they either annex or develop, and at that point, they'll come onto the city's water system. The way we're handling that is they'll still be fed by our line. It doesn't make sense to have duplicate lines. There, you'd have water quality issues if you did because the use is so low. And so they will actually, our system will be set up that we just bill wholesale water to Tri-County, and then Tri-County bills them as usual. So on the customer side, and our water obviously comes from the same place, but so on the customer side, they won't see a change rates or, or where their bill goes or anything like that. On the city side, anybody that is switching over to the city will work with them to get new accounts set up, have open houses, obviously, so they can understand what's going on, do a lot of outreach to make sure everyone's up to speed on what's going on in the area as this project comes together. So any questions on the product itself before I go into the bidding and contract?
Yeah, the one question I have is, is the Tri-County lines, are they adequately sized for that tieover, and are they appropriately aged? Are they new enough?
Yeah, so it's a unique, unique element out here. So Tri-County's system originally fed off of Project Seven via Hillcrest, and so it has an old 14-inch line that fed through that whole area. At some point, when district change and the way their systems changed, this line kind of became a dead-end line for them. So right now, it's a dead-end 14-inch line, which is a really large dead-end line, which works out well for us because we're going to run 12 for the new, the line needs to be 12 for our system. And so we're connecting our, extending 12 we're missing, connecting to the 14, and then the interconnect back on Draft Horse is an eight. The line is an AC line, but, you know, AC, if left untouched, generally handles okay. We look at replacing the whole thing. What makes Hillcrest unique is until the corridor is built out and urbanized, wherever we put it, it's going to be in the wrong place. And so we figure there's a fair amount of life left on that line, enough to where twenty years down the road and Hillcrest is wide, it would be better to replace it and put it in the proper place at that time. So for, it is AC, but for our needs, it'll, we expect it to do everything we need it to do for the foreseeable future, and we didn't want to preemptively replace something just to have to move it again. So we're kind of trying to thread the needle there of budget and, and needs and right-of-way constraints as well. As you get north, you have some old properties in the county that are described to the center line, and it gets kind of a little tougher to do wholesale replacements beside it and things of that sort. So, great question, and that was something we had debated on which way to go with that, and that's the route we chose for those reasons. As far as the bidding goes, so this project was designed in-house. There's an excerpt from the plans can kind of show you just generally what's going on, where I won't, I won't dive into that. It's just kind of a more detailed version of what I just summarized. But the product bids itself, we put it out on June 19th, opened bids last Thursday. We received four bids, which for a utility product is really good. That was encouraging. We haven't had four bids on a utility project for a while because there's so few utility crews in the market right now. Yeah, I will say, though, the low bid was unqualified, or not qualified, but is an incomplete bid. They, with our bids, we asked for bid bonds. We have to, to, to show the, because the bonding is required by statute. And work plans and a bid form, which is actually where they give us prices of all the various work elements, because we pay on actuals, because, you know, scopes can, can change over time and things we don't want to pay, for something we don't use, say we use less patching, don't want to pay for more patching. They had, they just gave a single lump sum bid. So my guess is just general, and we talked about these things at the pre-bid meeting, but this is the first time we've seen a bid from them, so we'll work with them to help them understand what future bids need to look like, but not a workable bid for us that we could, we could award at the, at the 597. So the second bidder was Hayes Excavation. We've never worked with, we've never contracted with them before, where they have a pretty good reputation. They're out of Grand Junction. The general manager of that is the old general manager for Mountain Valley Contracting, who we have done a lot of work with. They've, they've been a pretty important city partner on a lot of projects. So although we haven't worked with them, we're, we're pretty comfortable that they're well-qualified, do the work. You'll see on theirs, they had two prices. So with almost every project we put out to bid, we don't want to overspecify. We leave kind of an opening in our projects if a contractor has a better way of doing something or want to, in this case, do, we had some portions of the product that were directionally drilled, if they want to open cut instead of directionally drill, if the market's really competitive for drilling right now, sometimes open cut is cheaper and vice versa, those kind of things. So we give them a means, we call it a value engineering proposal in our bids, where we say base, bid the product as it sits, because, you know, sometimes you get snake oil. People come in and say, oh, I want to do this with this pipe, and it's, it's the cat's pajamas, and it'll save you a million dollars, and it's the best thing ever. We look at it and go, no, it's, that's actually an inferior product. We don't want to go that route. But we do leave them open, so we ask them to bid the product as proposed, and then we ask them if they have something they want to, they think they, that would make the project more efficient or cheaper for them to also propose on that. We're trying to encourage ingenuity without having somebody undercut another bidder. So we say it's not guaranteed, but we do give them the option. In this case, they exercised that option, and the only change was the directional drilling subcontractors were really expensive. There were a couple portions we had as directional drilling, and they preferred to open cut them. And we says, yep, that's fine. That changes some of the quantities on aggregates and stuff, but still, the net price was still $757, and significantly cheaper than the drilling. It's kind of funny, when we did East Main, we bid it all as, or primarily as open cut, and they decided to go directionally drill on all of it. So no matter which one we start with in the plans, we're going to be, we're going to be the opposite. So that week directional drilling was cheaper, this week directional, or open cut is cheaper. So that's why you see two prices there, and that's why the award is the lower amount. So with that, you know, that's, that is the amount, it's the same exact pipe that goes into the ground, same product, and just cheaper, which is, which is great. So it's not like a substitute or anything that would undercut another bidder, it's just open cutting instead of drilling. Then we had two other bidders, Ridge Valley and Williams, which are pretty routine bidders in the projects. They're pretty busy, and so that's, you know, reflected in their price, as they're finishing up some pretty large projects for the city right now. So our recommended award is to Hayes Construction, not to be confused with Haynes Excavation. One letter. Easy to get those confused. But in the contract, amount of $757,318, because we did all the design, we would do all the stakeouts, there's no additional construction support contracts or anything like that, just the construction contract. On the product schedule and traffic control, because of how busy a lot of the utility contractors are, we actually gave them a work, a completion window all the way up to next June, where we gave them a 65-day work window. So once they start, they have to finish within 65 days, but we gave them that flexibility to start anywhere within that schedule. In talking to the contractor, if they can get materials, it sounds like they may want to start this fall, which is great, anything we can get out of the way and get it done. So more to come on that, but if they do start this fall, they'd be, yeah, starting as soon as materials show up and looking to get all patched and complete before the hot plant shutdown for the year. The, yeah, we gave them 65 days, and what they'll do is they'll actually, they'll have to close Hillcrest during the periods of active work, it's just such a narrow road, there's really no way around it. But once, once they're done with the reach, you know, it's kind of, because Locust bisects or splits part of the predict, you know, they do some work south of Locust, when they're done with that, they'll reopen Hillcrest. They'll do some work within the intersection, and when that's done, they'll reopen the intersection, and then they'll close the area between Locust and Draft Horse as lost reach. And so all, shouldn't, it's pretty unlikely it'll be all closed at once, and then it'll start coming back online piece by piece. And then obviously, access to local businesses and the school drop-off and things will all be open. They will be able to get, still get to, to the school. As far as the financials goes, we budgeted $900,000 for this this year. That was, budgeting was before the, the grant actually come in, and so you take the $600,000 that was allocated from the DOLA grant toward that, that leaves our share at only $157,000, which is a great deal, good grant, be helpful. This product was in our master plan regardless of the development in the area, and obviously needed for the housing regardless of, you know, what goes on immediately. So it was a priority product for us in any case, so like we always say, we like dofers and threefers. I'd say we at least got a threefer on this one, so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Excellent.
A slight, what beginning? You said that that will still stay open for people to get in and out of there?
Yep.
So won't be any bad on that?
Correct. Yep, yep. There might be some delays, but they'll still be, they can still get there, and we'll make sure that's accommodated.
We've got some houses on that first one going north of Main Street, Hillcrest, that's also a questionable street, but it may affect on that.
Not for this project. There is a separate project as part of the DOLA product for sidewalk extension up there. Those get relatively tight. The ride is already dedicated, so it's something that's been in the works for a long time, and it's not terribly uncommon, but we're actually working to snake that sidewalk around some trees and preserve those to, to make those impacts on those front yards as low as possible. We've met with the owners. Generally, they've understood since it's already established right of way. But for this project, most of the work here will be taking place out in the street corridor since it's a pretty narrow, any right-of-way through a portion of it.
Any other questions? Excellent presentation as always. Thank you. Moving on to the next item is Item D, City of Montros' Master Continuity of Operations Plan, and this is Emergency Manager Paul Eller.
Good, or good morning, Mr. Mayor, esteemed Counsel. Before you today to seek approval for the City of Montros' Master Continuity of Operations Plan, I've had the pleasure of working with all of the department heads and some of their supervisors to develop individual continuity of operations plans for those departments over the last year. We identified essential functions of those departments, the legal authorities for those essential functions, lines of succession, and then how they would do business in the event of a business disruption. As a result of that, we wrote the Master Continuity of Operations Plan that ties this all together and allows the city as a whole or an individual department to implement a continuity of operations plan in the event of a disruption. And we're coming before you for consideration of approval of that plan. Our recommendation is approval with promulgation signature by City Manager, Mr. Bill.
Any questions? When will this be coming to council for a vote? Or does it require a vote?
I believe August 5th.
August 5th. Very good. I want to really thank you for the hard work you've been putting in.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is not just on this plan, but just in general, in making sure that the City of Montros' emergency plans are up to date, on point, and coherent, and comply with the law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good job. All right, and moving on, our next item is Item E, Draft Ordinance for the Proposed Charter Revisions, and this is going to be a little longer. Mr. Dowsey, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Fink. I am trying to connect.
So you just should have had Scott do it for you, I guess.
We're good, we're good.
He's leaving.
Yeah.
Does Scott have a title?
Has Scott said, I'm not in planning either, so things just work. All right, so on May 19th, we went over the charter revisions. I am going to go over the ones that we discussed at length to change, but right now, the charter ordinance is actually in the packet with some highlighted language. So the first thing I want to address is the form as to how we would like the question that will be submitted to the voters. So when you're submitting this to the voters, it has to address everything that is being changed, so you have to mention all of the changes that are actually being made, so that is not confusing to the voter. So I put two different forms in here. I put in a long-run paragraph as well as a broken-out, I guess, section by section, if you will. I personally believe this is more legible. It would be easier for a voter to read through and see what all of these changes are being made, or at least the high-level view of it. So with that, I will look for advice from counsel on this, on which they would prefer.
Are you aware of? Microphone, please. Are you aware of any other community on issues such as this, how it's been presented to the voters and what reception has been?
Generally, what I've seen from other, other communities is they do it through multiple questions, so it would be multiple ordinances. Counsel has opted for one question. So with that, I have seen both options, but really as to one specific issue that there are a couple changes that they are making within the ordinance, or in the question. So I've seen it both. Fort Kins has recently done it like this, and like I said, I believe it's more legible because you're actually, it's not a run-on paragraph. That's not to say it's wrong or right, but I just think this looks, is more clear. Our previous in 2014, it was a run-on paragraph, so we do have history of doing it that way, but there's no right or wrong in this.
I would tend to agree with your, your recommendation. I think, you know, we want to make it as easily understood by our citizens and be less subject to the quote legalese, if you will. And so many of our ballot issues, because they're required to be such a temporary issues, to most people make no sense at all. So to the extent we can simplify it and make sense, I'm all in favor of it.
Perfect.
I think the simple way to do it is going to be the best of, most people are given a lot of attention anyway. Those that are interested in it can look at that, and they do have another option to follow up on, to find more information if they like it, so I think that's a good way to go.
Perfect.
I like this much better. When I look at the two of them together, particularly the one you have highlighted yellow, the first one just.
Right.
I'm not going to rate it, but then the supplement is much easier.
Perfect. That's my thoughts exactly. So when this gets brought to council in two weeks, this will be the only language in there, so the other paragraph will be deleted in full. there, so the other paragraph will be deleted in full. So going through the ordinance, and I'll just do a very high level, it's just going to be all of the changes. So it's not going to have the red line. However, in the whereas clauses, I do state that both a clean and red line copy of the full charter will be available on the city's website. I have not set that up. Once we have everything all set, that's when I have that up dogged. So with that, that's why the ordinance is as it is. It does not show red lines, but red lines will be available to the public at, once everything is set. Any questions on that?
One thing I'd like to point out really quickly is that when we set up this charter review committee, that we had three different mayors and two different city attorneys, as well as our city manager and deputy city manager and city clerk involved. So this isn't like the will of one person or one small group, that this is a very well vetted out, very well thought out, and very well reviewed revision.
Yeah, I agree with that, Devin. I also think that it's important, I mean, it's kind of obvious, but I think it's important to point out that it's the voters who are going to make the decision whether or not to implement these proposed changes. It's not city council or officials saying, "We're going to force this on you." We've, we've come through, we've looked at things that make sense to change, things that are antiquated that need to go away perhaps, and so we're going to the voters and saying, you know, express your opinion and let us know. And if the voter chooses not to accept the proposed amendments, that's the vote choice. So it's not like we've, we're forcing it down anybody's throat. And I think it's really important to continue to point out to people, because I do hear from people saying, "Oh, the city council just wants to do this," and that's not the case at all.
Correct. I agree with that. So we went through this on May 19th. There were a few minor edits that, or clarifications that we wanted to make to the changes that were being proposed. One of it was the notice requirements. So Colorado statutes has changed where, if you're putting on a public website, it is now conformed with open meeting laws. So any notices for any meetings, as long as it's on the public website, it is, it is in compliance with the open meeting laws. Now, the concern was not all of our citizens are technologically savvy and they enjoy actually seeing it or go to it in the newspaper. So while we only have our local newspaper publishing, I believe, twice a week, so who knows what will be happening in the future with newspapers. So I have added a language in there that states that the city will use best efforts to publish the same notices in newspaper of general circulation, provided it is still in circulation. So I believe that addresses your concern. Perfect. Then it was on to executive session. I believe council wanted executive session not to be just a number three. It's the majority of council members present. So if there were three council members, that would constitute a quorum. If in fact they want to go into executive session for any reason, only two would be voting in the affirmative to enter into that executive session. I believe that was council's wish from last we discussed. So I did cross out the "and" enter executive session because in that scenario where there's only three present, if it were to leave it there, it would be all three members of council would have to vote in the affirmative to go into the executive session. So the sentence I propose is, "A majority of council members present at a regular or special meeting shall be required to vote in the affirmative to enter into executive session."
And this is also in compliance with Colorado revised statutes?
Correct.
So that, that was the one bit of confusion in the way that it was written before, is that this is just clarifying that, not specifically changing anything that we already do?
Correct. And without any of these changes, it is my opinion that that's what Colorado revised statute says. If we did change it to where we wanted three people, a majority of council, just a majority of council regardless, then we would have to change it to just have the "enter into executive session." We can differ from CRS as a home rural municipality. However, this, I believe, is along with CRS.
Checks all the boxes.
There were only a few more edits. So with red line, it's a little confusing with the numbers, but the last sentence here is to, this is the term of office where four years for districts, two years for at-large. It was brought up that what happens if there's a vacancy? So I did put that, this is subject to Section 11 vacancies in this article. So it does, it speaks to that without getting complicated, ambuluted. Oh, if someone is vacant for, if a seat is paid for two years, one year, or three years, it really just, okay, go look at this section and all of your questions should be answered. Okay. Moving along. This was a clerical error that actually Greg Stunder, he picked on, where we have in, and this was not brought up at the last session, but we're changing to 50% and then we put in perincy 50%, but we don't have it mirrored up at 25%. So I just added that in so that it's consistent throughout the procedure section. With the municipal court, the, it says that the judge or the municipal judge shall provide authority and responsibility of the municipal court, including budget, court personnel, and regulations. Court personnel is being stricken. This was changed a few years back, I believe. Greenacre was our judge. It was, court personnel was taken out of the court because it is a part-time position. And then the, the second F, the salary and compensation is dubbed by motion these days as opposed to resolution. So that was changed. And I believe that was all discussed during the last, the last session. So with all of the changes made, that is what is in the ordinance. Additionally, I do have the redlined version of the franchise section. Now again, I was not party to this. This was brought to Ken Feldman, who is the foremost expert in Colorado for franchises and public utilities. The overarching trend of this was removing the requirement to go to a vote of the people. This is because federal law has changed. That's no longer the standard. The standard in federal law is, it is held to the city council. There were plenty of law, I forget the exact lawsuit that really changed it, and then federal law caught up with the lawsuit and go on. So with that, if we'd like to go through these red lines, I'd be happy to go through them. However, again, once this is all finalized, all of these red lines will be on the city's website. So however you'd like me to approach it.
Where's the language about where the municipal court judge?
So that would be court and field services. So each judge or assistant judge of the municipal court should be a resident of the County of Montrose.
Okay.
So that will be removed. That was the discussion, again, two, three years ago, a little over two years ago at this point, to remove that residency requirement.
Because that seems to be hot in social media right now.
I believe it. Again, the reason for this is you can have a less qualified candidate for the position out in the west end of Montrose County, which takes hour, hour and a half to get to the City of Montrose. But then if you have someone in, say, Delta, which takes half hour, and they are a better qualified candidate who is unwilling to move down to the City of Montrose, you're hamstringing yourself in these elections. It's, again, it's a part-time position. It should only be two days a week, I believe. That's the two days that court is held. So that is why the residency requirements are going to be, or proposed to be changed.
I think we've discussed it. Microphone. We've discussed it a couple different times over the last couple of years too, so I think it's, I think that's a very good move.
Right. And I believe it happened in one of the vacancies, I believe, I forget when, but a very well-qualified candidate was, I believe lived in Fruta. But once they found out the residency requirements, they pulled their application.
We had that happen in a couple of cases, where we had a highly qualified candidate that lived just slightly outside of the county, and they would have been a very excellent choice, but they were not willing to relocate and sell their home and everything right across county line.
Right. And again, it's a part-time position. This isn't something, someone will be doing for a career that would be difficult. So.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Dowsey? Do you have anything else?
Not unless we want to go through the franchise line by line, but I have the overarching reasoning for it.
Yeah, we have one of the preeminent little experts that did that, so I don't feel the need to go over that red line.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Moving on, general city council discussion, and I do have a couple of them. First, I want to start out with that this weekend, we had the Dolphin House Golf Tournament, and they always have a golf flag that is given to, especially to major donors. And they gave us the one for the Montrose Police Department in honor of and with great, great thanks to the Montrose Police Department, and I wanted to present this to Chief Hall.
Thank you, sir.
And the Dolphin House is one of our great, great partners of our local child advocacy centers, and they do an extraordinarily good job in a very, very difficult job. And we just wanted to publicly thank Dolphin House for all of their hard work in making sure that our children are respected and safe. The other item I don't want to bring up is that in our past few years, we have adopted this tradition of canceling our second meeting in December. In this case, it would be December 16th in advance of the Christmas holiday to make sure that staff and council that want to travel and have that time for family have that availability. So I'd like to propose that. We'll have a little bit of a discussion on that. If everybody gives the head nod, we'll put that on a consent agenda item with your consent, and we'll, we'll move forward with that. And the logic behind that is that in December, we have so many events and so many things going on, and in order for people and our staff and our council to really devote time to their families, we just have been in the past canceling that meeting. Thoughts?
What about work session on the 15th?
I am open to that discussion. I don't, I'm okay with canceling that as well.
Unless there's something that we absolutely need to talk about.
Unless there's like an incredibly pressing an emergency, I would say that, you know, cancel that 15th work session as well, make sure that whole week is cleared. Everyone good with that one? Mr. Ullary? You're not good with that?
Oh, no. I didn't have a problem with it.
Okay. I better clarify, that was a pretty quick, "No." I'm like, oh, oh, gosh.
Well, you can meet by yourself.
A man of firm opinions, I tell you what. So on the subject of the Dolphin House Golf Tournament, we had such a great time, and it was a little bit warm, but we had a really good time, and it was one of those great opportunities to support a great local charity, but it was really also a great opportunity, I'll say, just for me to just have a little bit of real casual one-on-one time with our, our staff and our, our great department heads and just really relax and have a good time and not have to talk about any business at all, and give Mr. Dowsey a hard time about the color of his fancy Doxen shirt, which was lovely. Any other city council comment?
Do we have a picture of that?
We do.
We should post it.
I'd just like to comment on getting our emergency manual put together. I think you did a great job on that. Timing was excellent. And I'd also comment that you've done a good job of educating Bill. I called him on some questions the other day that helped with that, and he was actually able to answer them.
Is it possible to get some comments about how all of this is affecting the City of
Montrose?
We've actually discussed that and would like to have somebody make a brief update to the community tomorrow night before our meeting or during the meeting so that they get, that our community has an opportunity to hear what's going on, what they can expect, explaining kind of what they're seeing as well as what they're not seeing. So we're looking forward to having somebody, it might be Mr. Eller, but it might be someone else, give a brief update to council and the community tomorrow night.
Well, one of the concern, one of the concerns that I had voiced to them was our water supply. We've taken a lot of flak on our plan to Project 7, building a new water supply south of town. This is a perfect example of why that's needed. If the water were to get contaminated with any of the materials they're using to put the fire out, coming, it's coming down the river, the ash, potential danger of a fire on, on the entrance to the tunnel. I think these are perfect examples of why we need that, and I think we need to get that word out to the community so that they do understand this is a perfect example of why we were pushing forward with that new facility.
Yeah, I have Scott Murphy here to talk about that, so we can talk now about any effects on our water supply, if there are any of that kind of thing, and a location, how that is tied in with what's going on currently. And then just to clarify, were you talking about the COOP plan or this particular topic for getting info out to the public on what the city's doing?
Yes.
Okay. We'll work on both of those fronts, just to make sure. But we'll turn it over to Scott. He can talk a lot about the water supply issue.
Maybe he can also clarify, do I, our water comes out of the river for most part. Our backup is Storm King or reservoir, but all that water comes down through Bosworth Park in order to get to our plant. So we actually have a situation that could affect both, both supplies.
Yeah, and we'll be prepared to speak more about this at the open house, because we're getting the same questions from the public as well. Greg, can I steal the thing, I'll just share some pictures to help, some of the initial discussions. So yeah, so this will be the, consider this the primer for, you know, more detailed discussions to come, but I'll give you an overview of where it's at right now on the water supply So the, the concern is very valid, and it's something we're watching closely. So good example, what happens, you get a large wildfire, you get the erosion runoff that create a lot of havoc from a water treatment standpoint. So that ash in the water changed the chemistry of the water and makes it very difficult to treat. You get physical limitations, damage to diversion structures, things of the sort, and large sediment loads as well. Glenwood's a really good example, and they're also unique, were uniquely protected as well in certain ways, but Glenwood's a good example. We had the Grizzly, I think it's Grizzly Creek Fire, Grizzly something Fire, the one in Glenwood Canyon a couple of years ago. They had their intake directly off of the river there, and it was severely impacted right away, very large vulnerabilities. We're, we're, we're watching this one closely. There's no major concern yet on, on this particular fire, and I'll kind of go through why here, going through this map. So this is latest map as of last night, I believe, Paul. From the, what we call the South Rim Fire, burning on, it's kind of started in Black Canyon and it's working its way predominantly north and south. To orient yourself on the map, this is, you know, this is the Gunnison River going right through the middle, you know, the Black Canyon of the Gunnison proper, you know, cliffs, all the, all the steep terrain here. And what you're seeing here on this fire line is mostly the rid line. And so the fire is, you know, getting to that point, and they have little isolated pieces, as we understand it, where it's going down to the canyon, but they're pretty isolated and they're generally able to quell them or they burn out because you just rock to burn and it runs out of vegetation. But the fire has managed to progress southward. So, you know, the large infrastructure at risk as you go towards the south is Crystal Dam and large transmission lines that come off of it down here, just off the, I think they're just off of this one. And then the diversion, this is the Gunnison Tunnel here, and the, we call it the East Portal, it's the diversion for the Gunnison Tunnel, down in the bottom of the Black Canyon. So the fire has progressed to this point here. But similarly, what you see here, most of the fire is down gradient of the diversion. And so because it's not going into the canyon, there's not a lot of vegetation. So even for the pieces that do, there's not a lot of potential impact where the runoff would come in and is up gradient of our drinking water diversion. A large fire in the, one of the tributaries of like Blue Mesa or up in Crested Butte, those are larger, larger concerns. Not to say that this one couldn't change tomorrow, you know, it's something we're watching very closely, but as we sit right now, everything is more or less down gradient of our, our diversion, our drinking water supply, and we're not necessarily at risk from this particular event. If things progress differently, or if it moves larger, or, you know, another lightning strike tomorrow in a different basin, that story could change the system. And, you know, you're talking about the water resiliency project is geared, that's one of the primary drivers, is if you have a large basin-wide fire, you know, think of upstream of Blue Mesa, that would negatively impact the water quality and impact treatment. That being said, with how large Blue Mesa is, all the reservoirs along the way. That being said, with how large Blue Mesa is, all the reservoirs along the way, there is some protection there. It's not, you know, it's not a, a major problem waiting to happen tomorrow. But it's something that we just need to keep an eye on and manage and watch closely. But we're, we're, we're well updated from, from Paul and, and the federal folks on what's going on here. So we're able, in the loop, Adam Turner with Project Seven is in the loop as well. So it's something we're kind of all managing together. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything to it, Dave?
No, I think that's, pretty much summarizes it. We're, we're, we're monitoring it and, and just to make sure that it doesn't have an impact.
I, I guess maybe my question, I should direct to Paul. As of this morning, is there any containment of the fire?
No containment. There's likely not to be any containment through the week. The fire is still very active. Winds are swirling up there, changing directions. They are starting to get dozer line and hand line in, but it'll be a time, it'll probably be the end of the week before we see any containment.
And I've also heard, one, one report I heard was that Boswick Park has been evacuated. Another one I heard it has not. Can you comment on that?
So Boswick Park has been evacuated. There are a couple of people that chose to stay, which is their choice. And then east of the Highway 347, there's another little area that is partially evacuated as well.
Thank you.
Can you, can you comment on how it's going on the North Rim?
So the North Rim Fire was approximately five acres. It was contained that day, heavy air drops. There is concern today and tomorrow because of the fingers burning on the south side with the winds expected from some dry lightning thunderstorms, that there may be some spotting over on the North Rim. The incident management team has accounted for that and has protections in place.
I guess one, one final question, is the visitor center has been protected?
The visitor center has been protected. They've had teams up there each night. They've done an extensive ground clearing around the visitor center, and unless things change, it should be okay.
I, I guess my question too, Bill, was more, can we be direct? Are there any city staff who are actively involved up there? I, we know both Scott and David and Paul are on monitoring, but do we have any staff there actually working? No.
I mean, there's a lot of staff actually working.
We hope the staff is actually working.
I mean, a little bit at Sero, just keeping, so that's something we're offered up for water, as the water supply, for bucket drops and things. So we're actively keeping that going for them. But yeah, I think the rest is all on pause. Not, not, yeah, just keeping, as, as.
We have offered our, our support in every, every way possible to the actual, active participants in the mitigation, but at this point.
So, so you all know, I attend the morning operational briefing every morning. I attend the cooperators meeting at 11 o'clock, except for today. Represent the city at both of those meetings. I am tied in with the Type III team with their liaison officers. Deputy City Manager Morgan Taylor is tied in with the Public Information Team there. So that is the extent of our involvement at this time.
Very good.
And I might just, you know, share it to Scott's point. Our team is great, and this weekend was able to put a lot of things in place to provide resources to the folks surviving the fire. So we were able to make water available through a hydrant, that we can track how much water is used there. So thanks Utilities Team. Our Public Works Team was putting out kind of traffic control devices near where the Incident Command Team is coming in and out in order to make sure that people on Highway 550 can see and slow to avoid accidents. So while the fire's not, you know, in the city limits, there are some impacts here. And I think through the Police Department, Public Works, Utilities, we did a lot this weekend to make sure we could support in those ways.
And one final comment before I wrap this up is that the Incident Command Teams have made it really clear they have all the physical help they need. They don't need more donuts or water or, or Gatorades or candy bars. They don't need any of that right now, but we thank the community very much for all that outpouring of support. We think it's fantastic and it shows the heart of Montrose. Right now, what our first responders need is just room to work. So we thank the citizens of Montrose. And if there are no other questions or comments, we'll move on to staff reports.
Couple of traffic things. So paving crews that started on West Main last week were actually scheduled to pave in the Black Canyon this week. Because of that, they're obviously not going to be working up there, so they've freed up. So it looks like we're actually going to be able to get all of West Main, west of Grand, patched back, this we call the shoulder patching, which is a great thing to help really clean up that area. They poured the last of the concrete there this morning. So moving on to the area between Grand and Sealeague next, which is a lot smaller. But that'll really start making that, start coming together. The landscapers will keep following up behind them and things on the north side, so. So that was great. I mean, unfortunate that their schedule got disrupted, but it worked out for the, for the West Main project. East Main will continue with the service, changeovers ongoing, working their way east. Expecting to wrap that up towards the end of July, so just a couple more weeks here yet. And then you'll see more concrete work. And then the overlay is still yet to be scheduled for Main Street, but obviously still on track for this year. We do have one more high-impact closure this week is at the intersection of Rio Grande and East Oak Grove out at the, where we're doing the utility work there in front of the new Public Workshop. Two weeks into that work, and they're already a week ahead of schedule. They're able to do the road crossings initially now, or one, two of them. And so they're going to wait till after the morning rush at 9:00 AM. And then ideally be, we're saying they'll be closed through the end of the day, but ideally that'll be opened back up before the afternoon rush out there, just two crossings. So they're getting everything ready to go, so it should go be quick. The detour will be to Colorado Avenue, just because there's no other connections to Rio Grande, unfortunately. So if you're coming southbound, you'll hit a local traffic only, so you can still get to Wapa and, and Apollo Drive and River Bottom that way. But there will be an outlet, because you won't be able to get across the intersection there in front of Rio Grande and Oak Grove. Same thing on the other side, if you need to get, come to Wendy's, you can come off of Townsend, but you won't be able to get down through, across the intersection. So we'll have, we got some press, press releases going out and I'll work to get some message board signs out today. But hopefully, if we, if it's short enough, hopefully most won't even know it happened, and they'll be, it'll be up and running by the time they come through for the afternoon, so. The others are just trucking right along. Slurries, I don't know, slurries as well this week. So slurries did the chip seals last week with part one of two on the minors. The slurries will go on top of those after a week cure period. And then they're also doing all of the other slurry seals throughout town. So most people will be getting cones and door flyers and anytime the map changes or dates change, Ryan will update the press releases with, with new dates and things, if they have any breakdowns or anything. So that work should be take, going on for about two weeks. And then, then we should be over the, I think it'll start calming down a little bit after all that.
One thing I'd say, that we did have that announcement on, on social media that showed the map that had all of the dates and times and colors. I would say that we use an awful lot of variations of purple, which may get a little hard for old folks, like me, to look at and say, which purple is that day? So if they have any other questions about what date that is.
We do have other colors to choose from. That's good, good advice, Bill.
Well, I have to say, I think you guys done a great job on both ends of Main Street, maintaining the traffic and keeping the flow going. I haven't heard any major complaints with it.
They're doing storm work as well on East Main, so that's, again, it's the last of the, last of the worst of it. Hopefully, it should be getting better here, so.
Lovely. Any other staff comments? I don't see anybody jumping up to come talk to us. So with that, thanks, everybody, and we will see you all tomorrow night. We are adjourned. I don't see anybody jumping up to come talk to us. So with that, thanks everybody, and we will see you all tomorrow night. We are adjourned.